Put your square up in the, in the top part there.
Mayor, we can't see you.
It's this, uh, square here. She says she can't see me for whatever reasons why. Tip, tip that down a little bit.
Yeah, we can only, yeah, now you can see you.
Down a little bit more.
Does anyone know how to make the squares bigger on the screen here?
Well, there's two options. One is the speaker view and one is the gallery view. If you want to see everyone, it's the gallery view and I don't think you can adjust the size of the square.
No, you can't adjust the size of squares. Just fix up the screen so that...
Okay, well, I'm gonna have to put something behind it here.
People there, because that's more heavy. Got it here. Right there, that was good. Down a little more.
Adjusted it for him.
Move, move it forward a little bit more. Move it forward three.
How's that, everyone? Is that okay?
That's perfect.
Thank you.
When anybody's ready, get started. Judge, you ready to start rolling cameras here?
Cameras rolled.
Okay. I like calls meeting to order. This meeting has been properly advertised and posed in accordance with Public Law seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one as a special advertisement. As December twenty-third, twenty-twenty, in the Daily Journal. If we could please rise to the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the free public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We normally have a, uh, moment of silence. We're gonna do a little better than that tonight. We're gonna have, uh, an honored guest here, one of our own. From Estill Manor, we have Mr. Tom Novak, who's gonna lead our city into a prayer. Tom, just wanna step right here.
Best attorney, just, there you go. You say it. Okay.
Uh, thank you for having me here today. Uh, the Apostle Paul wrote to a young, a young pastor, a young preacher named Timothy. And he said to him, he wrote to him and he said, first of all then, I urge that supplication, prayers and intercessions and thanksgivings be made for all people. For kings and all who are in high positions. That we may lead peaceful and quiet, a peaceful and quiet life. Godly and dignified in every way. This is good and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to kno- knowledge of truth. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in the midst of civil unrest and a pandemic, we have taken time to honor your holy name. I lift up our local leaders and ask for your blessing to rest upon them. I pray for our mayor, for city council members, and all who serve our local community. Strengthen them with wisdom and grace from, from the heavy burdens they are carrying. Help them through the power of the Holy Spirit to manage their projects and manage each other with love. I pray their hearts and minds will be fixed on you as they work to serve the best interests of the community. In the name of my Lord Jesus, I ask for your blessing upon our leaders. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Ne- Novak. Very uplifting words. If we can still continue and remain standing, I would like to, uh, keep someone in our prayers. Uh, one of our long time ago, uh, city councilmen, uh, Ed Christensen has passed away. And I also would like to keep in mind of all of our residents, uh, who have passed. I also would like to be sure to keep our military and all of our emergency responders in our prayers, because they have one of the most difficult jobs than anyone could ever think of. Amen. Okay, at this time we have a, uh, new member of city council. Uh, one I've known for a good number of years, Mrs. Sparks, and would like to see Julie get sworn in at this time.
Ms. Sparks, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Keep one hand on the steering wheel and raise your right hand.
Okay.
I state your name.
Julie Sparks.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear what you said.
That I will uphold the Constitution...
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the same...
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the government, to the establishment of the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties...
And justly perform all the duties...
Of the office of councilperson...
Of the office of councilperson.
In the city of Estill Manor.
In the city of Estill Manor.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. Sparks, you're part of the team.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna meet myself, I'm gonna meet you again.
Okay.
Uh, can I roll call, please? Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Dilch?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
Ms. Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Benesia?
Present.
At this time, I would like to, um, give the state of the dri- city address. Good evening, Estill Manor residents. Welcome to our annual reorganization meeting for twenty-twenty-one. I would like to wish a happy new year to everyone here in Estill Manor. I also wanna thank Reverend Tom Novak for coming out to our meeting to lead us into a prayer to start off on the right way. I also wanna congratulate Julie Sparks on her election and wish her all the best for her endeavors here on city council. Twenty-twenty is a year like no other I've ever seen in government. Covid nineteen totally disrupted all of our lives. Many of our finances and life as we were accustomed to living, in which we take our freedoms for granted. Besides some people having their health affected or the loss of a loved one, government was affected very bad as well. City halls closed throughout New Jersey and across America. Loss of revenues and disruption in services made nearly every municipal town hall very difficult to operate. I do wanna thank our staff here in Estill Manor for the difficult job that they had and able to navigate through. Well, Estill Manor has been able to find its way through and will continue to work this coming year to provide the services that our residents need. Next, I made what has now become an annual presentation with the Senate Budget Committee this past year, which was held at Rock- Rowan University. All municipalities who are reliant upon pilot funding, that being payment and low taxes, were assured that our funding would be restored to what we received back in twenty-ten. That figure is a little better than a hundred ninety thousand dollars. Instead, because of Covid nineteen and the devastating loss of revenue to Trenton, our figure remained at a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. All municipalities were told sometime back around September, after we had long passed our adopted budgets, and anticipating the increase in the revenue. Trenton's continuous inability to get rid of its debt and control its spending has and will continue to affect all five hundred and sixty-five municipalities. Estill, especially in school funding, which is about seventy percent of your tax bill. We must continue to fight for our fair share of funding. And as mayor, our residents have my word, I will try to do my best to get our ru- our just funding. Also, our city must focus on public safety for our residents. We will continue to help and work with our fire company. They are in need of new radios to be able to communicate with mutual responders. We have very old serious threat for their safety. This year, we must also put money into the budget to purchase a new dump truck with a snowplow. Unfortunately, some rather poor decisions were made from a previous administration to invest in obsolete military truck. That money could have been used to purchase a brand-new truck. However, the city just recently sold that for ten thousand dollars. And because of the total failure to maintain our current vehicles and equipment, that will mandate the need for a new dump truck. It will be in the city's best interest to do the same as what the county does, which is to lease purchase. Keeping our roads cleared from snow can be a big public safety concern. As a city council, we must work together to maintain the public safety of our city and maintain financial stability. All municipalities have serious funding issues, as many of us rely upon our fair share of funding from Trenton. And with Estill Manor being a rural community with virtually no ability to attract a commercial ratable, we will forever have a great challenge to maintain our financial stability. But, I will end this address with the fact that most of us moved here and/or have remained here because of the safety Estill Manor provides our residents. We don't have inner-city problems, such as homelessness, widespread poverty, or the need for constant police protection. In that sense, Estill Manor is one very blessed community and a great place to raise a family and a safe community to live in. God bless all of our residents, our military, emergency responders, and please, may God bless America. Thank you and best wishes for twenty-twenty-one.
Mayor, you have to go back up for the election of council president.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Next time you gotta make this praying a little bit bigger for me, Judge. Um, is there a, uh, motion for a council president?
I ma- I make a motion. I nominate, uh, Betsy O.
I'll second.
I second.
Oh, can we have roll call?
Yes, uh, Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen? Ms. Owen?
You're m- muted.
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, I don't have this on the agenda, but I believe that, uh, we have one of our state police, the assistant, uh, station commander who would like to make a public address, um, to our city. Uh, Sergeant, are you with us? Sergeant, are you, uh, with us here tonight? State police number, no. Okay. Hopefully he'll come in at a later time and then we'll just turn the meeting over to him at that time. Okay, we have some nominations for professional appointments. Um, the first one, I actually do need to discuss, um, uh, some contractual, uh, arrangements, and I would actually prefer to do that in closed session, so at this time, we'll just simply hold that one uh, for, uh, resolution oh-one-twenty-one. Number two, authorizing a contract for, uh, city labor relations attorney. Um, Mr. Dilch and myself met with, uh, two very highly qualified, uh, labor attorneys the other night. Um, difficult sometimes when you only have two to choose from, but I kinda, uh, lean towards the one guy that seemed to, uh, uh, have some very good answers, and I think he's really looking to save the town money rather than just billing us for every single uh, letter or piece of correspondence that comes through. So at this time, I'm gonna make a nomination to appoint, uh, Bill Blaney um, for our, uh, labor council. Is there a, uh, motion to accept?
Second. You're looking for a second?
Uh, Mr. Dilch, if you could, please make a motion to, uh, uh, to accept, and then we'll need a second.
No, he did. Make a motion and we...
No, he said se- I'm sorry.
You made the motion, Mr. Dilch seconded.
I made the nomination.
That's it.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to appoint a Blaney firm for Labor Relations Council.
Okay.
I'll second. Uh, roll call, please.
Yes, uh, Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
Yes. Number three, authorizing the award for a city contract for the city auditor. Um, I would like to nominate Bowman and Company, uh, with the caveat that we continue to have, uh, Carol McAllister, who has served our city rather very well, um, as our auditor. I will make that nomination. Is there a, uh, motion?
I'll make a motion to, for Bowman, for the account, accounting auditor.
I will second. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
Yes.
Uh, next we have the risk management for resolution number four. Uh, that would be Hardingberg is who I'd make the nomination for. Um, as a matter of fact, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, risk management. It was, uh, it's, uh, Hardingberg, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
Yes.
Uh, number five, authorizing award of twenty-one contract for the city engineer and for the conflict engineer. I will nominate, um, uh, Mike Fralinger, uh, Fralinger Engineering, and also CME as our conflict engineer, such as what we did last year. Uh, I'll make, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second. Sorry, Matt.
Matt, you made a second? I'm sorry, Mr. Olson?
Yes, second.
Okay. Uh, if there's no discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
Yes. Number six would be, uh, awarding contract for the, uh, landfill engineer when the time comes for that. I'll make the nomination for, uh, CME, that being Greg Blessey. We had this, uh, last year that we did. So I'll make the, uh, motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Can all council hear?
I can hear.
Is there a second?
Okay. There's a second.
We have the, uh, prosecutor, number seven. This time, I'm gonna, uh, nominate Mr. Carl Tripusian as the prosecutor, and, uh, Daniel also from, uh, the, uh, conflict prosecutor. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
Yes.
Uh, we have, uh, resolution number eight. Hold on one second, please. We have resolution number eight, awarding, uh, public defender contract to, uh, Frank Lentz and, um, Michael Peyton as the, uh, conflict, uh, public defender. I'll make the necessary motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. I, I have a question.
Yes.
This, the whole over, are these the same folks that were public defender last year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Mr. Dilch seconded.
Mr. Dilch, okay. Uh, if there's no further questions, roll call, please.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
Yes. Moving down to number nine, uh, authorizing the award for the twenty-twenty-one Forester. Um, I, I will make the nomination for, uh, CME, who was the only one who put in for it.
Second. They were our, question, they were our Forester last year, correct?
They've been the Forester for probably several years. They're the only ones that seem to apply for it. Is there any other questions? Uh, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
Yes. Uh, next we have resolution number ten, uh, awarding the janitorial services. Um...
Well, I ask a question. Why are we moving on from professional appointments without resolving them? If we have to go into close to talk about the solicitor and the engineer, why don't we do that before we move on to the next thing?
Nothing about an engineer to clo- talk in closed session. I'd like to get to the council meeting, and then we can go into pl- our closed session.
I'd like to have the solicitor resolved before we need him for the meeting.
Mr. Dilch, I don't think that would, I don't think that would be appropriate. We're gonna continue on with the meeting.
I make a motion, we go into close to discuss this appointment of the solicitor.
Second.
Uh, Mr. LaFerty, is that appropriate to do? This is a personnel matter. And to, and to interrupt the meeting in the middle of the reorganization? I don't see, I don't see the value of doing that.
That's a priority motion, and it needs to be voted on.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No? There's three other members of council?
Those are fo- four, yes. That one, uh?
I don't know.
I'd better take a roll call.
I'll do a roll call on this.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Benesia?
No.
Uh, before we go into the closed session, uh, we do have our, uh, sergeant from the state police. I would like to turn the floor over to him so that he doesn't have to be held up in limbo indefinitely. Uh, Sergeant, welcome to our, uh, meeting here. You're, you're muted, sir. You are muted. You have to take the mute off?
Trooper, you are muted. Can you please take the mute off?
He's asking us to wait a minute.
That's why.
On the top, on the top right-hand corner, if you tap on the black...
Got it?
You're good, you got it.
There you go.
Good, okay.
Uh...
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Trooper Michael Satarik. I'm here, uh, on behalf of University Station. I'm representing Sergeant First Class Shulkey and Lieutenant Nicholson. Um, I'm not exactly sure what you're looking for from me, so I guess if you go ahead and, and ask some questions, I'll answer what I can, and if I don't have answers, uh, I'll get them for you.
Uh, actually, sir, annually, what we do each year is the state police do attend our, uh, uh, reorganization meeting. They usually give an outlook of, you know, uh, our city. And if there was actually any questions or any concerns that we wanna bring to the, uh, state police attention, uh, this is actually a good time to do it. So, um, you know, if you have anything that you would like to, uh, talk about with Estill Manor, if you are aware of crime situations, things that we should be aware of, things that you would like to, uh, uh, see happen within our community, or, uh, just anything in general that you feel is, um, you know, pertinent ish, interest to the city.
All right, well, I mean, from this, from a station standpoint, um, Estill Manor City, we've been, we've had four hundred and twenty-five calls for service. Forty-four investigations, which, uh, for an area that, that size, eh, in my opinion, is not overly, uh, it's not out of hand as far as investigations go, and those could entail anything from, you know, uh, property damage, broken mailbox, up to, you know, narcotics and, and things of that nature. I don't have it exactly broken down uh, other than the forty-four investigations. Most of them were non-criminal, from what I'm, the notes that, uh, Sergeant Shulkey has given me. Uh, thirty-four motor, motor vehicle crashes for a year? That seems to me like it's pretty good. There's some pretty, uh, highly-used roadways that run through Estill five-five-seven, and, uh, I believe parts of five-five-two run through there. I know cars tend to go pretty fast and with, on some of those roads late at night. Uh, fifty-eight alarm calls and sixty-two medical assists. Now, with, with the medical assist calls, it seems like a high number. I'm sure that that's Covid-related. A lot of those uh, Covid calls that we've, or medical calls that we've gotten as well, um, we, not that we don't, um, record them or, or memorialize them in our CAD system, but similar to pa- uh, almost like in past incidents where uh, EMS would stage outside of a residence until we have it secured. It, in some cases, it's almost been an opposite sort of effect where we would stage and let EMS go in first, simply because they're more equipped to handle, um, somebody with a positive Covid or possibly a positive Covid, uh, outlook. And then if they determined or decide that it may be, uh, something criminal or something uh, fishy, for lack of a better term, then we would go ahead and enter the residence. But for the most part, I think the lieutenant and the sergeant for, the SFC are, uh, happy with, um, you know, the way that the community is, is panning out. It's not a high priority area in far as we don't get a lot of calls out there. Um, and the ones that do are generally what, what we consider low priority in the sense that they're not violent crimes, for the most part.
We're doing fairly well. Sir, do you happen to know, I, uh, are, are the state police utilizing our city hall for their, uh, for themselves as a minor or, or a little substation? You do have a passcode to get in, you do have the, uh, key to get into our building?
As far as I know, a- as far as I know, w- we're not. Not at the, at the, from, not from the Beunivist, the substation. I don't know if there's any other units uh, that work out of there that are utilizing your building, but as far as I know, no one is, is using your building.
Only, only the Beunivist of, uh, Barrups is the one that has access to our building.
I'm sorry?
Only the Beunivist of Barrups is the only one that has access to our building.
Well, there's, there's others, uh, units that work out of Beunivist, uh, as, insofar that it's Troopey Headquarters as well, and that line is not always clear as far as working at Beunivist and working for headquarters. But again, as far as I know, nobody is utilizing any of your facilities for, uh, for any reason, other than maybe, you know, a bathroom break door and their patrols, because it is pretty good ways back to our station from the Estill Manor, uh, municipal complex.
Yes.
There it is.
All right, sir. Uh, if you don't have anything else, does any member of council have anything, uh, that they would like to ask the, uh, trooper?
I bet. I would compliment, uh, the trooper and his folks on the New Jersey State Police every time that they show up anywhere for any reason, at any time of the night or day. They're the sharpest guys in the room, in the city, on the scene, and we're, for the most part, the residents of Estill Manor are very grateful to have you. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
I would say ditto's to that as well. I am, uh, proud of our state police. I think you guys do a, uh, pretty decent, uh, job. Um, I'm hoping that somewhere along the line through budgetary reasons within Trenton, that there will be, uh, uh, more troopers that could be assigned, because I do know that you're not necessarily, uh, fully-staffed a hundred percent of the time. And I know that that could be an issue for you guys, but hopefully, we're gonna be able to, uh, uh, overcome that in the immediate future.
Uh, I hope so too. Uh, it's, I'm getting close. I'm gonna be going soon myself, so...
Uh-huh.
Uh, yeah, we would definitely like to, you know, it kinda ebbs and flows. There's times when we have, uh, right now, we're, we're finishing up the recruit, uh, training from the last state police class that graduated. Um, when they're done, they're gonna have about three months or so, and then they're gonna be moving on to their next... Um, when they're done, they're gonna have about three months or so, and then they're gonna be moving on to their next stations. Um, promotions, specialist selections. Right now, we're, we're, we're staffed pretty well, but that, that's not gonna, it, it's definitely, it won't last. And for some reason, we have a difficult time recruiting in South Jersey. So I know I'm sixty miles away from you guys right now in my, in my, at my house, so and I, I have one of the shorter drives to get into, into work, but, um, you know, we, uh...